Hey, good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, August 13, 2019. Please stand and join us for the Fledge of Allegiance. Andy, can you lead us in the pledge?
I would like to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently-recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Okay, first on the agenda tonight, community announcements. Doug Webb?
Sure. We just wanted to announce that Senator Keenan is going to be holding office hours on September 17 from 5:00 to 7:00 here in Rockland Town Hall, and any residents that have any questions or comments are free to meet with him at that time. So again, it's September 17, 5:00 to 7:00 here at Rockland Town Hall. That's all we have for community announcements.
Next on the agenda, open session minutes of July 9, 2019. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, next on the agenda, common vic license for change of owner for New England Authentic Eats, DeAngelo Sandwich Shop. I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor? That's a vote. Okay, I'm hearing that there's no audio. I got a lot of people getting... No, I got like, I got like five messages all of a sudden saying, "No audio." Is anybody in WRPS tonight?
Everybody's on, right?
Can you hear us now?
Well, can't help that. Sure, it's there somewhere. You know, this isn't the first time it's ever happened.
Okay.
So if we go like this, will people just drive here?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I think...
Well, if it's video recording, then I assume that it's going to be sound recording also, but the sound just isn't playing. This has happened before.
Okay.
It's not this first time, so...
All right, so let's keep going, then.
That's the worst that could happen.
There you go.
It's actually better for me, I look as though I sound awful.
Who told you that? All right, next on the agenda, CDBG environmental officer appointment, Wayne Darrow.
Good evening, Wayne Darrow, Community Opportunities Group, Town CDBG Consultant. Item before you tonight is relatively simple. Under the Community Environmental Grant Program, we have to complete an environmental review of the different projects we're doing. In most cases, we can do all of that upfront.
In the case of a housing rehab program, we can't because we don't know what buildings are going to be assisted at the time we do the application. So there's a secondary review process that has to happen, and it needs to be signed off by the environmental certifying officer who's designated by the Board of Selectmen. With the recent changes in administration here, our environmental certifying officers, the last two have moved on to other endeavors, so we need to designate someone. I'm suggesting the board designate Town Administrator Lap to serve as the environmental certifying officer. My staff and I will do the actual research on the environmental impact of the projects we do and present those findings to Doug for his signature.
Anybody have any questions for Wayne?
Oh, is this okay with you, Doug?
I know.
Thank you for asking. Yeah, we have a very good working relationship with them, and it's totally fine.
Okay.
The motion to approve that Doug Lap is the community develop, whatever you want.
Environmental certifying officer.
Environmental certifying officer.
Good thing, good thing there's no...
I was gonna say.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? That's a vote. Congrats, Doug.
Thanks.
Beckett's here?
You got audio over there? Perfect, okay. So Larry said...
Thank you.
Thanks, Becca.
Larry knows.
Okay, next on the agenda, charter review update. Doug Lap.
Sure, thank you. So, as you recall, you guys have done a lot of work before I got here, and at the most recent town meeting, the town appropriated $25,000 for technical assistance for a charter review. And so we included just that article in your packet. And then also, Marcy Birmingham, before me, had solicited a proposal from the Collins Center from UMass Boston to potentially provide some technical assistance for the town as we did a charter review. So we thought it would make sense to kind of talk about next steps. And there's another concept I wanted to throw out there as well, maybe to back up, just as a reminder. If you were to hire, if we as the town were to hire just a private consultant, you know, that's subject to Mass General law Chapter 30b procurement laws. If it's over a certain threshold, you have to get quotes or do RFPs, et cetera. But because the Collins Center is part of UMass Boston, which is a state entity, we don't have to worry about that procurement. We're allowed just to contract with any other governmental entity without having to go through that procurement process. So if you wanted, we could go right ahead with them. One other idea I wanted to throw out there, maybe as a first step before we did that, is the Mass Municipal Association actually has a former government committee that helps municipalities in this exact situation to provide advice on, you know, charter updates, charter review. So I thought maybe it would make sense to first reach out to them, because I believe that's free, and get some kind of initial feedback from them, and that might help frame where we're going, and then we could look at step two, hot going with the Collins Institute after that. So if that makes sense, I could reach out to the MMA. I didn't want to start anything without kind of running it by all of you. I also asked the town clerk to let me know who's on the committee, because also at town meeting, it created a charter review committee, and it listed kind of who's appointed by whom. And what the town clerk told me is that, and part of that also looks like it references a charter maintenance committee. So we'll sort through and figure out if the entire committee has been appointed. I'm unclear if the whole committee's been appointed or not.
So we've had a charter maintenance committee for a number of years now.
Yeah.
And I believe we're at two members on that currently. And then we also have the charter review committee that I believe we appointed just a couple of months ago, right?
Right.
Does that sound right? Yeah. So that information should be there.
So you think it's fully, okay.
Yeah, I think we fulfilled that committee.
So I guess my question for you would be, is there anything specific, you know, when I reach out to the MMA's former government committee and ask, you know, for some advice from assistance, is there anything specific that you would want me to say, "Hey, maybe pay attention to these areas, you know, these are things of particular concern," or is it just kind of a whole general? I mean, I know what my own feelings are, but I want to make sure I cover yours.
I think all of us, probably everyone in the room, has a whole laundry list of areas that we'd like to see looked at. Like, I mean, I can think of a bunch off the top of my head, but I'm wondering if we bring those issues up now, or if it's almost like premature.
Okay.
That's just my question, because first of all, I mean, I would like to like, I would like to look at the elected full-time official issue. I'll just mention a few. I would like to look at the provision in our charter that no member of the finance committee is allowed to participate, like, or to be on any other committee.
Yeah.
Where I think in some instances, that perspective would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Those, I mean, and I'm sure there's a laundry list more, those are the top two I can think of, but...
Sure, okay, that's helpful.
One of my pet peeves is committees that we appoint, don't put the minutes in, don't fill out their paperwork that they're supposed to do. I think it's improved in the last year, but I still think that we need to make sure that all departments, such as the zoning and the CONCOM and whoever we appoint, we have minutes with who took the votes, what they voted on, who was there, yada, yada, yada. If there's nobody there, we want to know what you did and when you did it. And, you know, we want them to answer to us. We have to, you know, if they want to do something, or they have a project that's something that's in addition to their regular duties, such as the Open Space Committee and things like that, is that they run those things by us before they go and run off what they want to do and work their agenda versus the agenda for the town. I just think that we need to corral the volunteer boards that we appoint. If we appoint you, we want you to work for the town, not for yourself, not for anybody else. And I think that we have to rein some of those people in.
Just the full-time elected positions within the town, as well as one of my main concerns that I would like to look at.
Doug, I tend to agree with you as far as bringing MMA to have a look at it. You know, I think a lot of these issues came up, and we didn't know that we had an issue with the charter until obviously the issues that we ran into, you know, a year and a half ago. And as issues come up, we notice that, yeah, all right, we have a problem with this, we have a problem with that. But I think a full-scale review of the charter, and what each member set up here, I think, makes a lot of sense. But I think a full-scale review of the charter is more what we're looking for, just so that, because just because something hasn't come up yet doesn't mean it's not something that might be broken. So I'd like to see what the, you know, everything is out there and what other towns are doing and what we might be missing before it becomes a problem.
I'm sure Rich has some input too.
I'm sure, absolutely. Yeah, Rich definitely has some input on that, yeah. So, Mike?
Oh, and two more things. One, I'll, in terms of like another thing generally we would look for, really, I mean, as Mike just mentioned, oh, you know, there were issues out there that, like, in our charter that we're probably not even anticipating, but, you know, our charter is however many years old. Oh, well, like in 2019, like, in my opinion, our charter still, oh, you know, really reflects that, like, a lot of things in town, like, governed by the Board of Selectmen, and arguably, just by the sheer fact that the nature of town government has advanced, like, in the past however many years we've done the charter, oh, you know, like, are there issues of efficiency where there are some things that are really in our responsibility that frankly should be in yours, like, as an administrator, really to empower you and to make sure, oh, you know, that things are efficient here, like, in this building, for the residents and the businesses we serve. So that's generally on a very broad picture. But the question I have is, so, like, I love your idea about bringing the MMA here, but after that, there could be a consideration whether to, you know, hire the Collins Center as a consultant or to look at, like, other entities. Who will be making that decision? Would that be the charter review committee? Or will that, or will you come, or will that question come back to the board, I guess?
My personal advice?
Yes.
That should be a decision by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, yes.
You know, if we're spending, you know, town money appropriated, that's my advice.
I agree.
I agree, too.
That's fine with me, I just...
Good question.
And I don't want to cut any of you off, I had a couple of thoughts as well.
Yeah.
Two, a couple of things that sort of struck me, maybe three things. One, obviously, we talked about before, is the whole, and this won't affect me, this will be my successor, but the whole one-year probationary term for a new town administrator, you know, down the road, that's just, I think that makes it harder for you guys. I think that's something you should look at.
I agree.
There's a few parts of the charter where, to me, it's a little ambiguous, kind of who has a kind of authority over what. There are certain times where it talks about the town administrator position kind of acting in your place when you're not able to do things, and it's just unclear, where you should be the policy-setting board, and my position implements things. And in general, I think one major thing we should look at is just appointing authority for town staff in general, because as you guys know, I mean, you have lots of employment contracts with individual people, which I think we should talk more about, because I think there's some issues with that. Other town staff are appointed by other elected officials, and all of that leads to just a lack of accountability. If things go wrong, you're going to want me to take responsibility to address things, but I might not be able to if there's people out there that aren't under my control. So that's another major area I think would make sense to look at.
One of the issues regarding that is that we sign the union contracts, we negotiate the union contracts, so we, our names are on the papers, but when they go into those offices, they, the people that are the elected officials say they belong to them.
Right.
So who do they belong to? I mean, if there's a disciplinary problem, or is there some sort of, any financial problem that comes back to us? Any disciplinary problem seems to disappear into Nowheresville.
Right, that gets to the accountability point.
Yeah, and that's, you know, and again, you know, it's not a question of wanting control, but if somebody has to be in control of, you know, who, we have, those type of things have to be spelled out, who's responsible for the unions that the Board of Selectmen sign, but we lend them out. I say we lend them out for them to use. And if they can use them any way they want, but they're still our employees and not their employees. And that type of, that type of thing, I think that's where we have to tighten the grip a little bit, because there's too many fingers trying to work the pie, and not everybody can put the frosting on the cake. There's only one guy that knows how to do it right.
Hang on, I'm writing that one down.
There you are.
You got pie and frosting?
There you go, pie and frosting, that's your name.
No, this is good. So when I had an initial call-out to the MMA, they just wanted, just some general things, like, what were we looking at? So this is helpful, I can forward this to them, I'll get some feedback, maybe we'll schedule a meeting, and then that'll kind of just get things started, and then we'll go from there.
Doug, do we need any kind of a formal vote to direct you to reach out?
It's up to you, I feel like.
Yeah, I think so, okay. All right, any further discussion on tonight?
No, thank you, Doug.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number six, the auditor's contract.
So, you know, it's funny, I didn't plan it this way, but the segue is actually very good, because it's another example of what, there's a little bit of ambiguity in the charter. I think I have a good argument that, you know, it's the town administrator's decision which auditor the town hires, but you can also look at another provision, there's a little bit of ambiguity, and I probably would have done this anyways, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page and I'm doing what you guys want. As I've evaluated things in Rockland, we had our exit interview with the auditor, who the town, I believe, has used for like over 20 years, a long time. It's generally not a best practice to use the same auditor for that long. You know, usually it's more like every five, five-plus years or so, you'd want to mix it up and get a fresh perspective. I've also had experiences with that, the auditor, that had been doing Rockland for the last 20 years. I had experiences with them in Sandwich, and in Sandwich, for a variety of reasons, the town chose to go in another direction and hired a different auditor. So what I would like to do would be to bring in, bring in a new firm, get a fresh look at everything. I did have a discussion with the auditor about that, let him know that that's the direction that I was recommending, and I wanted to go in. They're obviously not happy about that, but, you know, this is business, it's not personal. So I just, I'm happy to get into more detail if you want, but I just, I wanted to, didn't want to surprise you with anything, I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Would you like a motion? Would that be helpful?
Sure, that'd be helpful.
Okay. I think, you know, we've all kind of seen this coming, and I agree with you, Doug. I think they've been our auditors for, I think, over 10 years now, and just a fresh pair of eyes, a different perspective, and without, you know, maybe some biases that might have existed or have grown over the years, you know. I think it's, I think it's a good idea to keep things moving in that manner, and, you know, if we're changing over a lot of things in Town Hall, this is just one other thing to do it at the same time. So, I have a motion.
You got a motion.
I got a motion, wait a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Motion is to the lobby, it's to Lap to choose, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Choosing, yeah, great. And just so you know the process, so we have our, I'm calling it our financial team, so it's the tax collector, accountant, treasurer, assessor, the assistant, Jen, and myself. We've already reached out and gotten proposals from three highly reputable South Shore regional firms. We're going to be interviewing them. I intentionally scheduled that for after this meeting to make sure we're all on the same page, I would cancel them if you weren't. And then we'll, you know, no matter which one of these three we pick, it'll be a, it'll be a good firm. Great.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, number seven, opioid litigation update. I asked Doug to put this on the agenda, I think Mike and Larry, you guys at least remember a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, a year and a half ago, we entered into a mass torch against the creators of opioids, and I just figured it'd be a good time to get an update, that's where we stand. Doug?
Sure. So luckily, before I left my position in Sandwich, I got to attend a large stakeholders meeting in Framingham, because Sandwich has signed up for the same litigation that Rockland did. And so there are representatives from towns throughout the state and Rhode Island and all over. So luckily, I attended that in June, and it's directly relevant to this. I need to be careful, because they were very strict. I had, everybody in attendance had to sign all kinds of confidentiality and non-disclosure agreements, because it's really like real litigation strategy, and I suppose at some point, we could have an executive session and get into more detail if you want. But in general, what I would say is, you know, going in, not knowing, I mean, I helped Sandwich fill out the request form, so I knew what the, what the town's perspectives was, but I wasn't really sure how strong our case really was. But going, coming out of that meeting, I was blown away. I feel very confident that all the towns are going to be successful in getting some monetary relief. They presented a lot of the evidence that they've accumulated, both documents as well as video depositions, and it's, you know, whether it's the manufacturers or the distributors also have a huge role, and it's very positive feedback, you know, that the case is strong. So a lot of what they're doing now is sort of legal things that I can't articulate, because I'm not an attorney, but it involves, it's not a class action lawsuit, but it involves how they're, how they're structuring it, and if they're successful, the funds would not go to state attorneys general, like they did in the tobacco case. They're trying to structure this so towns would go, funds would go directly to the town. So that's much better for us, it won't just get, you know, lost in the mix up at the State House. So in general, I just think you should know that it's, things look good, there's still a long way to go. In preparation for this, though, I did ask our attorneys from Clifford and Kenny, because they also had an attorney who was present at the same meeting in Framingham, and they did produce a short memo for each of you that gives a little bit more detail. So I'm just going to hand this out to you. This is executive session material, so don't give it out to anyone, not until, you know, the trial's over, but you can read this later.
Thank you.
And that was really all I had at this point, unless you had any questions for me on that topic.
Okay, sounds good. Any discussion?
No, thank you.
All right. Number eight on the agenda, approved bond anticipation note sale. John Elwood, come on up, treasurer. How are you, John?
Excellent, how are you?
Well?
Okay, so tonight, we're going to, I'm going to ask you guys to formally approve the ban that I was able to go out and get. Ban is a bond anticipation note, it's a short-term borrowing until we permanently bond for these three projects, the water mains, the curbing ADA, and the community center, for a total of just over $1.1 million. We got a very good net rate, 1.75 approximately, which I was very pleasantly surprised that it was that low, given I can go out and put our money in a, in a money market for, you know, between two and a quarter and two and a half. So to get that under what I can go out and put the money in at, I was very, very happy about. In your, I think in your book, there's a rather lengthy description of the motion that you need to make. You don't necessarily need to read it, as long as you all have reviewed it, and you can just make the motion be as written. And so I'm asking you to approve it, so we can complete the sale, get the money, and, you know, for these three projects.
So something that came up, too, is the clerk of the Board of Selectmen. I don't think we currently have one. I think in the past, it's been the vice chairman, but I think maybe we should formalize that tonight and just get that down with a vote for...
I signed them already.
I know you did, but we'll do a, I can get a motion for Larry to be clerk of the Board.
I'll make a motion that Larry Ryan, acting in his capacity as the vice chair of the Board of Selectmen, also serve as clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
Second that.
All of those in favor?
Of course, I'm all for it.
Yeah. Okay, so, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
As written?
As written.
Second.
Any further discussion? All of those in favor? unanimous.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, next on the, the agenda is Board of Selectmen approval of MEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan. Doug?
This is, this is wonderful for me, because all the work's been done, I'm just pushing a little bit of paper here, but I guess the way the process works, the town has its hazard mitigation plan done, which looks like an excellent document. It's already, as you can see from the emails, it's already gone down for review at FEMA, so they've preliminary, preliminarily approved it, so it comes back to you. You need to vote to approve it, this final version, and nothing's changed, and then it's going to go back to MEMA for final, final approval. And I put in, just because the document is so long, I didn't want to put the whole thing in your packet, but I put, you know, the table of contents and just some of the introductory information, just so you could, you know, get a sense of how comprehensive it is. But I know Fire Chief Duffy, who sort of spearheaded this, is, feels very confident in it, and it's good that the FEMA's already preliminarily approved it.
Didn't they come before us a few months ago and present?
They did.
They did.
Exactly, and I'm told nothing's changed since then.
So just a question, there's a couple of names for the Rockland Local Hazard Mitigation Planning Team that no longer with us, Marcy and then Dan Callahan in the Water Department. Should that reflect your name and Joe appoint?
Are you...
If you're on page one.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Acknowledgement and credits.
Yeah, we'll see, I mean, you know, we can think about maybe recognizing the work that they did, because I didn't really do the work, but I'm in this position now, so we'll figure out a way to recognize that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll...
I'll make a motion to approve the Town of Rockland Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor? unanimous.
Fire chief does a good job.
He does do a good job.
Okay, next on the agenda, McKinley Building Sprinkler Repair Update. Jen?
So I'm happy to report that repairs to the sprinkler system at McKinley School through the second floor have been completed early and on budget. The contractor reported that the work went better than expected, and there was minimal pipe replacement that was needed. The system was flushed, all the sprinkler heads have been replaced, and the fire alarm has been connected and activated. The third floor remains clear and offline for use pending repairs to that portion of the system. Daycare resumed as of Monday, August 12, back at the McKinley Building. The TOT enrichment chipmunk program will resume on September 4, and all other fall programming will begin about the second week in September. And I believe Director Gene Blaney will be in at some point to update the board on those programs. Youth commis... Oh, I think I have a question. Youth Commission and daycare offices have also relocated back to McKinley as of last week. And on even more positive note, both the veterans' offices and the WIC office has seen an increase in use and participants since they moved to their temporary locations. So Peggy Bryant at the Senior Center has offered, she's realized a great benefit to her, to the seniors, in having the agent at the Senior Center, has offered the space permanently. So Vinnie will remain at the Senior Center. I think everyone's, yeah, very happy about that. WIC has also requested to remain at Town Hall, and Doug and I agree, it's, you know, it's been fine with them here and have offered, at least for the foreseeable future, as we discuss space use overall at Town Hall, that they could stay.
Were there any buildings...
Yeah.
WIC is using the Chaffee Conference Room. It didn't interfere with any, you know, regularly scheduled meetings, they have the backdoor access, and like I said, they also have seen an increase in participants in the program since moving to Town Hall. So I just want to thank also Town Hall staff and the school department for being accommodating, for being so accommodating during the transition, and the youth commission and daycare staff for being so flexible. for being so flexible.
All right. Any other questions?
No, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo everything you just, I'll echo Jen in terms of all the departments and the cooperation and the opportunities. I believe the, that the crisis in a way it created to get everyone back, I get, oh, the whole issue almost served like a bridge to where we're going. And I think it was, I'm extremely helpful, but I, I also want to thank you for all your efforts. I think it was like your first week when you came in and that issue just exploded and you dived right in. And that sprinkler, one of the people that, that sprinkler should be named after, in my opinion, is you. So, so, thank you.
Do we need a motion?
No. So thank you, Jen.
Is that something you want, Jen?
Sprinkler head, the sprinkler head named after, there you go.
Yeah, you can get back to me on that. All right, thank you, Jen. Thanks. All right. Next on the agenda, number 11, other business not reasonably anticipated. Anything on that one, Doug?
Not under other, I had the town administrator report. I'm sorry. Yeah, no other for me.
Okay. All right, so number 12, town administrator's report and correspondence.
Great, thank you. And I, maybe I'll just start by echoing what Mike just said. I want to thank Jen for everything she did with the McKinley sprinkler. I literally did nothing on that, and as you noted, she had to handle that very difficult situation right out of the gate, so appreciate her efforts on that. I got a long list, but I'm going to try to zip through it quickly because you guys are setting the tone with an efficient meeting here, so I want to try to keep it rolling. I was out of the office all day today up in Boston. I had to do a recertification class for my inspector general procurement training, so that was an all-day training in Boston. So that was done. So now I'm, will be recertified for another three years, so I just wanted to mention that. I did send to all of you earlier my update for the last, like, two weeks, so I'm not going to take the time to go through that now, but just, obviously, if you have any questions about any of those things, please don't hesitate to let me know and I'm going to find a way to do something a little less detailed and more frequent. But I just, you know, in the beginning, I thought it was helpful to send you that level of detail. Also, since our last meeting, I had another all department head meeting. I forwarded that agenda to you as well. I felt very good about it, you know? I feel like I've had some good interactions with department heads. Jen and I have met each of them individually, and now we've had two all department head meetings. And as you can see from the agenda, you know, we're hitting some substantive things, some kind of short-term things, and then also some longer-term things. So I feel very good about that, and I appreciate, you know, everybody's, everybody's participating and adding value in those, those meetings. I also held our first finance team meeting, again, the same group that I talked about reviewing the auditor proposals. And that's something that I really feel strongly about, is having a regular finance team meeting throughout the year, and it's obviously going to be especially helpful as we, as we work on developing the budget. And I had sent you that agenda earlier as well, just so you could see just kind of some of the issues that are popping up for us now before we get into the, you know, larger budget issues. And again, don't hesitate to let me know if you have any, any questions on any of those items. One random thing, I just thought I'd let you know, I got an invitation to attend a meeting, I assume with a lot of other neighboring towns, in a couple of weeks, and it's with the mayor's office and the city of Brockton. And the subject is just regional issues. And they just talked about the many community services offered in Brockton, many of which, you know, residents of Rockland use, and so there's some type of, of a regional meeting at the mayor's office in Brockton. So I just thought I'd let you know about that. I'll let you know what comes out of it. Yep. I believe you all know, but I'll, I'll give you the actual letter, that the town was formally awarded a Complete Streets grant of nearly $400,000 for the Liberty Street East Water Street intersection. I'll hand the letter out to you. I don't know if you have that, Jen, but there you go. So this is exciting. I know that Dave Taylor, the highway director, has put a lot of effort into, into developing this. I, I know it's a crazy intersection and it needs a lot of work, so this is going to be tremendous. And I think the way that Dave developed the budget, I think he's going to, there'll be a huge positive impact with this. So my understanding is, you know, given how late it is in the summer now, that construction will likely be next spring for this. But I did just want to mention that. Another point I wanted to highlight, and I think you might even have seen this on the department head agenda that I sent out earlier, one really good thing I want to highlight is the town clerk is working with our IT director, and we're going to be rolling out a new, I'll call it new functionality on our website. And it's, it's really going to be a link to another site, but what it's going to do is it's going to centralize all the boards and committees, that are, everybody that's appointed on every board and committee in one place. Because right now, if somebody wants to come in and maybe they want to know where there's a vacancy, what's open, whose seats are up when, it's, there's really no good central clearinghouse that has all the information easily identifiable. And so there's a system, and I was familiar with it because we, we used it in Sandwich, and so we had a demo here, and it's really simple. It's great. It lists every single board and committee. You can also search, you can just punch in a name and it'll pop up, and it lists all of them, lists who's on the individuals, when their, when they're appointed, when their term expires. You can click on it, get their contact info. There's other ways to display it with timelines, so you can see when staggered terms end. And this will really be like the central clearinghouse, so the town clerk will be responsible for maintaining it. And it's also useful, like you were talking, Larry, about, you know, maybe somebody just never bothered to get sworn in, or, you know, they, this will show, you know, their, their term has expired because they haven't gotten sworn in yet, and the clerk will have that central control over it. And I just think it'll be a really helpful thing for us internally as well as the community externally, because now there'll be one place where they can see it all. So that's, and it's, and it's short money, too. It's not a huge expense. So we're in the process of rolling that out. I'll, I'll let you know when it's done, but I shouldn't, there'll be a little bit of time and effort in the front end, just getting everything configured, but once it's configured and maintained, it'll be easy. So that's a really good thing. I also sent out to you guys, I think it was late last week, a list of capital items that, that I want to pursue. There's money appropriated in the budget. That was an outs, it was an outside item, and there was a carryover from a prior year. And there are just, you know, a number of things in this building, a lot of deferred maintenance, you know? Some aren't even maintenance if you just look at these horribly uncomfortable 1960s chairs here that might be helpful to update. So there's a long list of things we're going to do. None of them terribly expensive, but we'll see some improvements there. One, one item I wanted to make you all aware of that we just learned about is that it appears as though the town does not have a current floodplain bylaw or a floodplain overlay district. I'm not sure if you're aware of that or not, but it, it's, this was asked of us by the state DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, which oversees the state's flood hazard management program, which has a relationship to the federal National Flood Insurance Program. And so what they're, what they're telling us now is that by, by not having this, you know, we're in jeopardy of not being able to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So Jen and I are going to be working, we're going to talk to conservation, we're going to look at what's involved with, you know, creating a map, creating a bylaw and getting that done. But I just wanted to tip you off that it appears as though nobody can find it if it exists, and I...
The sewer department actually owns the streams and clear, supposed to be, they're, they're in charge of the drains. So anything they has to do with any outflows out of the town, I'll come under the sewer department. And I know John Loughlin was working on a couple of...
Yeah, we can definitely talk to him, but I think, it sounds like the town needs a bylaw to be able to be eligible for the program, so that's what, we're going to work on that.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to let you know about that. One issue that was brought to my attention was that the way you guys have been doing the ambulance billing, I guess you call them abatements, when you sort of write something off as periodically, I think the chief would come in and you would vote it. And I think there might be a more efficient way to do that, so I'm working with the town accountant and the chief, and I think we're going to put a proposal together. Maybe if you're comfortable with it, have you guys vote to delegate that authority to me so that we can just do that outside of having to wait for a posted meeting, because it seems kind of perfunctory. I don't, yeah, I don't think it's a big deal.
I don't think it's a big deal either.
In my experience in, in Sandwich where I worked, that was just something we did administratively. I don't think it needs to be voted at a public meeting, so we'll come back. That's just sort of a heads up. One thing I've been looking at is the budget and some of the contracts that we have in town, and there's two in particular that I'm paying a very close attention to. One is the cleaning contract that we have with the, the cleaning company here. I just want to reevaluate the expense. I need to look at the procurement that may or may not have been done when we got that, and also just balance that cost versus just hiring a part-time employee, because it's, it's a significant amount of money. So I'm evaluating that. And then I, I did tip, tip you all off to this one earlier. I felt the need to terminate the contract that the town had, has with the Guilfoyle PR firm. So in looking at it, there was a, the contract had a sort of automatic renewal provision, which we're really not supposed to do, but that's how, you know, we've been operating with it. And the, the cost increased after the initial period of time. So now the, the contract was totaling over $15,000 a year. And in looking at the budget, I don't think we have any appropriation for $15,000 a year for that service. And I, I made a point of explaining to them, I think they actually do a really good job. I think they're a good firm, and certainly with the water main break and with a lot of the McKinley stuff that Jen was dealing with, they were really helpful. But again, we don't have an appropriation to pay for the contract, and I think we can...
I think they were always supposed to be temporary anyway.
Right.
I think we had a deal with them that once their term ran out, that it was supposed to be over.
Right. And so the way it's, the way the contract was written, it just sort of automatically continued unless the town opted out. And so I exercised that opt-out. So we're good through the end of August. And if you guys have different feelings and you want me to try to find money somewhere else to, to cover that, but, you know, and I think if there's ever any other, any issues in the future where we feel like we really need their services, we can always hire them again. It's not like once we let them go, we let them go forever.
Who will be doing communications to the press?
Yeah, so what I'm thinking is, you know, that's something that I can do with Jen, the two of us together. I can write press releases. We've done that before.
Correct.
So I'm comfortable doing that. We're also exploring sort of activating some social media accounts, whether it's the Facebook page or creating a Twitter page.
Nice.
And I'm, I'm care, I want to be very careful doing that because I, you know, I know it can be a hornet's nest, so I've, I've been cautious. We haven't done it yet. But at a minimum, when it comes to just writing press releases, and I can send it out to all the same outlets, you know, that Guilfoyle was doing, you know, the papers and the...
Makes sense.
TV, et cetera.
Absolutely.
As well as the website. But I do want to, you know, roll out some social media, because I do think it'll be helpful. We just want to control it.
Awesome.
And then, I only had two, two other items really quick. And I'll start with the last one first. As I alluded to earlier when we were talking about the charter review, in talking to our, our labor attorney, again, looking at all the different individual contracts that you have with various town employees, as well as looking at performance evaluations that I want to roll out for department heads and potentially also their staff, I think it'd be helpful to have our labor attorney meet with you and us in executive session to talk about that, because there's a lot of issues that that brings up. So it's mainly just tipping you off, maybe next month, or, and we can schedule an executive session with her. Perfect. And then the last thing, I apologize this is so long, the health agent, Deli has put together some really good information about the triple E threat with mosquitoes. So as you know, there's been a couple of confirmed cases, one farther down in Plymouth County, and I think they may have found one in, in Whitman. So she put together an excellent one-page sort of fact sheet, which kind of educates the public about avoiding mosquito bites, and, and potentially, if things really don't go well, the board of health may need to actually restrict some kind of dusk and early evening outdoor public activities. Hopefully, it won't come to that. But this is something she put together. I want to give it to you. We've put it on the town website, and we're also going to be pushing it out other ways as well. And that, that is all I had.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Sure.
Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen?
I'll be quick, but this, Thursday night from six to 7:30 at the senior center, I'll reimagine Rockland together with the Town of Rockland and with support from the Rockland Police Association, Rockland, and the Rockland Firefighters Local 1602 Union, as well as Stop and Chop in Abington. We've all been working together to come up with an event. It is called like a Rail Trail, a Rail Trail Chocot in Ice Cream Social. And so we'll have ice cream, I'll like right out, excuse me, right outside the senior center, and we'll have art opportunities. We'll have some artists who are coming by. We're inviting families and our kids to come by, have an ice cream. I'll draw, like, anything within reason on the rail trail. And just really, like, it's mid-August, it's going to be August 15th, like, oh, excuse me, all of us, like, already thinking about, I like athletics and back to school, but before the summer ends, I'll be thought to reimagine Rockland, just, I'll find an opportunity to bring everyone together in a very, all fun and just, you know, family-friendly atmosphere. So, like, anyone who's interested, whether you're young, old, in-between, or anything else, Thursday night, this coming Thursday, from six to 7:30 at the senior center and along the rail trail in that area, come out and have some, have some ice cream and draw a picture or a smiley face on the rail trail. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
I just want to commend everyone within the town for their work on the water main break a few weeks ago. I think everyone did a great job getting information out to the public, and everyone was well-informed, including the Board of Selectmen. So I just want to commend the town for their efforts on behalf of the water main break.
Mr. Ryan?
Something that the kids don't want to hear about, but back to school's coming up pretty soon, and so be aware of the, the kids being out there early in the morning and, and after school, and be careful driving around town. Football stadium's getting ready, football season's starting up again. It's always a great time of year when, when the pigskin gets tossed around, and hopefully the Rockland team will do well this year. And my wife and I spent a couple of weeks traveling around the Rocky Mountains, and let me tell you, there's an awful lot of space in this country that is just wide open. And I came back here and I said, how am I ever going to live back in this little, teeny little community? But you know something, there's, there's no place like home, as much as we traveled. And we spent an awful lot of time over 10,000 feet, and, and it was interesting to see, to drive by and look down the hill and see snow and not up the hill. So it was a really, really good time, and if you ever get a chance to get out there and, and see what really the country is really all about, get in the car and take a ride, you know? And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I just want to thank Dr. Kron and the school committee for inviting me to the administration retreat today. We golfed nine holes at the Rockland Golf Course. The weather wasn't great. I played really well. The weather wasn't great, the golf wasn't great, but it was good to be out there. And, you know, the school has, has a big year coming up, and there's a lot of excitement building along the, around the new school building project. And I wish them well and a good school year coming forward, and I appreciate the invitation. And, you know, I'm actually going to piggyback a little bit on what Larry was saying. I had the, I took the family on vacation to upstate Vermont, and, you know, when we were up there, it really makes you appreciate what we have here. You know, so, so often, you know, we, we see residents complaining about, about the roads, about the trash, about, yeah, I mean, all sorts of things. And, and we're up there, and we're 20 minutes into a dirt road on the side of a mountain, and then we get to our street, and it's literally like driving through huts of woods.